I'll call the meeting to order and start with a roll call. Lindsay?
Here.
Lilly?
Here.
Amy?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Kendra? Kendra?
Um, oh, let me unmute her. Sorry, when it's noisy in my house, I want to mute it.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay, and I'm here. I just want to start at the very beginning, just to mention the kind of extraordinary circumstances we're in. We had had a meeting already where we talked some about this, but I want to thank everybody for trying to accommodate these circumstances and certainly, you know, express our support for all the families that are going through some very difficult times here. And I want to do a special thanks to superintendent and the central office folks in particular, but all educators as well, who have done a lot of work to try to kind of transition so that learning can continue to take place, even though the school buildings are closed. There's a certain irony in the fact that the buildings are closed, and I think the superintendent's work doubled with the buildings closed. So I think she'd probably be happy if they opened again. It might reduce her workload a little bit. But again, I want to thank them for all the work that they've done. But we do have a public forum here. Does anyone from the public wish to make a comment? Wish to speak? I think everybody's unmuted if you want.
Let me work on that. Give me one second. I'm going to unmute all for a moment.
Anyone felt public forum? Anyone wish to speak? Okay, there'll be an opportunity at the end as well if you choose to. Next item on the agenda is the Teaching and Learning Showcase. And this would be a kind of a look at the e-learning options that are in place. So let me turn it over to the superintendent.
Excellent. Thank you very much, everyone, for joining us this evening. We are very, very pleased to be able to share with the community what we've done for our curriculum team. And I think, sorry. Dr. McGinnis is now sharing her screen. And once again, I just want to point out the fact that at this point in time, as a district, we are moving forward with providing all of our families with rich, robust, ongoing learning opportunities and enrichment activities in order to keep our students moving forward. We are working with our staff diligently to make contact with our families right now, this week, since as you are clearly aware that, beginning on the 13th through the 17th, we considered those days to be snow days, which allowed our community to have four days to prepare for shifting to more online learning opportunities. And during that time, we spent an enormous amount of time putting together this website and around expectations. And so that was what happened. And we all came back to work virtually on Thursday. And it was a very exciting day. We had virtual meetings with all of our principals and their staffs. And then Friday was the first day that all of our families were contacted by their teachers. And today, the opportunities continue to, I think, exponentially grow in terms of people reaching out. One of our most and chief concerns right now is ensuring that all of our families and our students are able to access our online resources. And not just our online resources, but our print resources as well. We have packets that have been made at the elementary level that people have been picking up. But it's a goal of ours to reach out to every single family, whether it be through the online community meetings or direct outreach from the teachers, just to check in and make sure that they are able to access what it is that we're doing. We're finding that even over the last three days, that number has shrunk in terms of how many people are engaging with us. And I do believe by the end of the week, we'll be able to be pretty confident that we know exactly who needs what in terms of either Chromebooks or Internet access, so that next week, if we start to engage a little bit more with the online resources, that we are doing it with confidence that it is something that our families can access. That doesn't mean that we are going into a distance learning type of model, but what it does mean is that if we're able to have activities on our website or our teachers are promoting activities, that all of our students and families can access them. So this week is that big week about access, and then we will continue to move forward. We have not yet heard anything other than the fact that we are scheduled to come back to school on April the 7th. Given the reality of what we're facing as a nation and as a world, you know, I think we're thinking about what the future might look like as well. But right now, we are planning for what will happen through April 7th. And if that is something that changes, we will shift into gear and determine what will be best from a perspective of a longer and more prolonged closure. I would also just like to say before I hand it to Dr. McGinnis that this is something that we are going through as a state. It is not something that Watertown is doing in isolation. There is a very strong group of superintendents who are in constant communication, trying to share ideas and best practices, so that as a state, we are moving forward in a very similar vein, so that when we do come back to school across the state, that our students are in a place that we can be sure that they're ready to enter back in. So I just want to make sure that we focus this more than just a Watertown endeavor, but actually a statewide endeavor as well. So I'm going to hand it over to Dr. McGinnis to walk us through the plan that her team has put together. And there you go.
Great, thank you. Well, I'm delighted to share this information. But before I do, I just want to contextualize the work that has been put into this. A little less than two weeks ago, all of the teachers met with curriculum coordinators for department meetings, and they did a brainstorm session and gave us a lot of information on what we could include. And then, as Dr. Goldston pointed out, teachers were out of school for the four days and returned on Thursday. So we're in day three of implementing this enriching and reviewing opportunities for students at home. I want to tell you something that you all know, and I think that parents have really, it's amplified in this time, and that is that we have amazing teachers. Even in just these three days, the stories that are sent to the superintendent and I and the principals as well, we meet daily and share these, and they're doing an outstanding job with this work. So for this, what I'd like to do here is walk folks through this webpage that we have developed here and have sent it home in lots of communications, but it's right on our website. If you go to the Watertown Public School website, you can click on a link there, and it brings you to this extended learning page. And as you go down, after my brief letter there sort of describing what we're doing, we have a small chart that's daily priorities, just a general area for all students, and then some resources for parents who want to talk about COVID-19 for especially the youngsters. It gives them some social stories to work with, just by way of example. But really, this first page, the nuts of it and the bolts of it, is this area right here, the daily planning framework. And the reason that I want to point this out is it's more of a holistic approach to being home for parents with their own work, maybe multiple children and maybe one computer. And so we want to make sure that folks are sharing our same journey in focusing on the movement. And so we say something for the bodies of children, the brains, something for our brains. And in this middle section here, we've just highlighted the most salient websites or curriculum guides for parents right here. But I'm going to click on a couple of links in just a moment that extend this. This very first part, right here, I'm going to click on one just to show you. This is K to 1, and it's a fantastic grid that our curriculum coordinators and our teachers put together. And as you can see, the topic mathematics, literacy, social studies is across the top with the most salient links for parents to use. And each section we've divided, as you can see here, if we look at the very first column under mathematics, and if you go to the second square, you can see K1 or grade, grade 1 or K if parents wanted to look at the iReady packets. Now, in elementary school, we also have the hard copies of these for folks that don't have access to a computer. And they were distributed all of the elementary schools in big plastic bins outside the front door. But if parents wanted the electronic form, it's here as well. If I go back to the webpage, you could click for a parent on any of these grade levels that your child happens to be in and get similar type resources. Another avenue that parents had asked for that was particularly helpful is our curriculum brochures. So if you click on grade 1, 2, 3, 4, what have you, you'll see a general brochure that was distributed at open house night as well. But it kind of tells you all about your, for this example, your grade 2 student. So it talks about everything from our special areas, like visual arts and music, to math, literacy, science, et cetera, giving you examples of the standards that we're focused on or their priority standards at each grade level. So there's one of those for 8 through 8 located there. Hot off the press today, the Department of Education late this afternoon, sent all of the districts across the state these resources for students and families. So if folks click on that, they've made their district curriculum supports much more user-friendly to parents, knowing that, you know, we're all in this together, and it's kind of challenging to navigate the Department of Ed website if you're not an educator sometimes. So they've done a fantastic job of having family guides here. And again, similarly, you can click on these links in either English, Spanish, Portuguese, or Chinese and get updates on curriculum in all of the disciplines here as well. So that's the new state resource there. And then, as most parents know, K to 8 anyways, and some in 9, iReady is our online platform that we use for math and literacy to do a diagnostic assessment three times a year and also to monitor the progress of our students, and then also to intervene, do interventions that are targeted to individual students. Well, that link is right here, too. It's also located in other places on the website. But if you click on the iReady link here, K to 8, it again goes to a more parent-friendly or supporting students away from school. That iReady has done an outstanding job supporting parents in this. And iReady is across all 50 states, so it's a very robust system. So again, if you go under here, mathematics or reading by grade level, it's going to give you some assistance there. And then finally, if you go to the top under curriculum, and if you have a child, if a parent has a child in elementary school and high school, they would click either one of these. Let's go to middle school, for example. All the curriculum resources. If you have a sixth grader, you would go here. And below the curriculum quarters, curriculum coordinators, contact information are the subject areas and some links to resources. Now, the reason we designed this was twofold. One was teachers were returning on this past Thursday, and we wanted parents to have resource to use right away with their students at home. So we designed this website for that purpose. But we also designed it so that teachers would have a place to go to collect some of their information that they needed, knowing full well that they were going to individualize and personalize it for their classrooms and their grade levels. So all of the parents and the students should have received an email from your teacher welcoming you, connecting you, seeing if you were able to access technology. And if not, our fantastic technology department has been deploying Chromebooks at the elementary schools for parents to pick up and other times, sometimes delivered places. So they're still working on that part of it. Let's see. So and then one other area I wanted to show folks is the digital learning area. Our tech folks, again, and our digital learning specialists have done a fine job with links to the most salient, again, platforms that we use in the district. And I want to point out a couple of them here. Khan Academy, most of you have heard. It's a wonderful learning tool for kids of all ages. So quick access right here. And the new one for us, for across the state from WGBH, is doing a lot of educational programming, especially between noon and 5:00 or 6:00 in the afternoon, so that folks or kiddos who aren't on the computer necessarily, or you want to have a balance of online entertainment or learning, and not online, they have a lot of programming that they're every day adding to at this link for WGBH. So it's a partnership that they're doing with the Department of Education in the state. So and then this excellent area here for a resource, we have screencasts or tutorials that help parents and students and teachers with reminders on how to use Zoom as a platform, the one that we're using right now for video meetings, Google Classroom, Google Forms, all of that. So it gives you the screencast or directions. That's located there. And finally, the last area that I would like to show you is, let me move our pictures around here, is SEL, Social Emotional Learning. This is hot off the press this morning. So our curriculum coordinator, Will Bertoni, and his Social Emotional Learning folks and the mental health counselors, school psych... Oh. And T, lots of information. They gathered a bunch of information here that parents could use to support their children at home with, oh, I might have lost connection there, okay, with social emotional wellness activities, things to help with students mindfulness. So I invite everyone to look through this because it's a really stellar webpage with activities that kids enjoy, actually, and parents might find helpful. So this is hot off the press today. So we're still kind of adding to that as well. So that kind of gives you the general picture of our remote learning right now. We're continuously updating as the days go on here. But again, the best source always is our teachers, who are doing a fantastic job communicating and giving sometimes some daily, some weekly information for students to continue their learning at home. One other thing I wanted to point out is that we're doing a lot of online meetings, as you might imagine. So for example, tomorrow, we have grade level meetings with the curriculum coordinators for literacy and math and science and social studies at the elementary level. So we'll have all kindergarten teachers from the three elementary schools meeting together in a forum just like this. We'll have all first grade teachers, second grade, et cetera. And then we also have departments. Some are 6 to 12, some are 9 to 12, and they each have meeting times so that they can have some consistency with supports and resources that they're providing their students. So all of that work is what's happening behind the scenes right now. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. McGinnis. Any questions from the committee? Questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I just want to say, this is amazing what you've been able to put together in a short period of time. And I think, you know, it's a great tool that people can use while they're trying to keep their kids at home. And I can't thank you enough for you and your staff and DeeDee and everybody that have been working on this.
Well, thank you, Mark. I really appreciate that. But I want to tell you, it was such a beautiful experience because it was co-constructed by so many district partners, from teachers to principals to curriculum coordinators. It really was a joy to work at, and it all came together quite robustly.
It shows that people do come together in times of, the times like this, to do what's best for everybody.
Yeah, we are resilient, yes. Thank you, Mark.
Okay.
I also want to reiterate my thanks, as well as just, I am so impressed. I have been getting constant positive feedback from around the community just about the engagement of educators on every level. You know, I actually mentioned to Dr. Goldston earlier that my son's kindergarten teacher did a morning meeting via Zoom this morning. That just was so incredible to watch, the way that she was able to use technology to bring out five-year-olds was pretty impressive. To the commitment of our educators, as well as their creativity and their willingness to do what's needed during this challenging time. And so I just, again, want to reiterate how impressive Watertown's response has been. I think that we are light years ahead, and have been told, actually, by a number of people that we are light years ahead of other districts in our planning, in our process, in our preparation. And I think that the way that you handled it with the four snow days really allowed for the time that educators needed to come up with their plans and produce very high-quality, excellent concepts to promote educational opportunities for children. While we can't necessarily provide the same type of learning environment, we're still providing a productive, positive one. So thank you to you and your team and to everybody involved.
Thank you, Lilly. I think you really pointed out something that's really important to us, and that was about, you know, having compassion for all parts of the community. So when I say teachers are amazing, by teachers, I mean all of our mental health folks, our instructional assistants. People are emailing us a lot. DeeDee and Dr. Goldston will say too, because they want to help. They want to contribute to this. So it's really been a beautiful coming together of community members. Even, you know, Jan Singer coming together with information for us this afternoon, trying to help our families. So it's been a nice experience in a challenging time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Other comments? I think everybody would reiterate the thanks and the excellent work that's been done.
I was just going to say that the whole process in what was put out, like Teresa said, was just so thoughtful. And so many people put their hands in, and it's very obvious. You know, it just feels like a great resource for parents and students and teachers to use in a way that like, it blows me away that this was done in four days and has been able to be so thoughtful in what we're trying to do. You know, I think the information we've received so far has been so helpful for the community to hear about, you know, this is an opportunity for enrichment and review. And you know what the purpose of these activities are. You know, I think so many people have questions about curriculum in the future and moving forward. But I mean, this, what has been produced in a short amount of time is spot-on by direction from the state that we have so far. It's just is a great resource that, you know, even when we get back to, you know, normal school, it's just an amazing thing to have available to the district. So thank you to everybody for the hard work on this.
Okay. Anyone else, other comments?
Can I add something?
Sure.
That's me. So I just also want to acknowledge the fact that our parents and our guardians and our caregivers are also equally going through something very tumultuous in their own experiences, especially now that, you know, we are in the stay-at-home order, starting tomorrow at noon. You know, and I think what we've tried to do is recognize and appreciate the fact that every parent is in a different place right now in terms of trying to manage their own work-life-family balance. And so we're trying to also be responsive to that as well because it is really hard to manage, you know, your three to four or two children, or even one child in a place that, right now, we are just learning as we go. But I just want to acknowledge the fact that I know that this is equally challenging, I think, for our families as it is for our staff to make this adjustment to such a hard shift in such a short period of time.
And Dr. Goldston, if I could just close my part of this by reading two, a couple of sentences here that a local teacher had actually shared with some parents who were concerned about regression of their children. And what the teacher wrote was, "Don't worry about them regressing in school. Every single student is in this boat, and they will all be okay. When we're back in the classroom, we will all course correct and meet them exactly where they are. Teachers are experts at this. Don't pick fights with your kids because they don't do math. Don't scream at your kids for not following the schedule. Don't mandate two hours of learning time if they are resisting it. If I can leave you with one thing, it's this. At the end of all this, your kid's mental health will be more important than their academic skills. And how they felt during this time will stay with them long after the memory of what they did during those four or more weeks is long gone. So keep that in mind every single day." I thought that was pretty good.
Yeah, that's great. Good comment. Anyone else want to, any other comments?
Just a ditto of thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I agree. You know, and so I think it's interesting, this is, I'm sure, kind of pushing the envelope on kind of learning opportunities, extended learning opportunities like this, which in some ways, down the road, may open up other ways that teachers can think about how they connect with students and how they connect with families outside the classroom. And it wouldn't surprise me if people started incorporating that in various ways because I think it, you know, in my own experience teaching, sometimes when I'm pushed to do something like that, I start kind of adapting parts of that to how I go about teaching in kind of in normal time. So, you know, maybe there'll be some benefits down the road from this very difficult circumstance.
A silver lining.
Absolutely.
Yep.
We're never go, you can't put this genie back in the bottle, so.
Right, right.
Right as you may.
Okay.
Dr. Goldston, you want to take mine down now, and you put yours back up?
I'm going to take control of the helm of the ship for a moment. So let's go to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, correct? Is that where you'd like?
Yes, yeah, next, we have some action items. So the Budget and Finance Subcommittee sent around the minutes from, they had three meetings, so they are in full mode, full driving mode here in the last several weeks, March 3rd, March 12th, and March 17th. And Kendra, do you want to summarize, and we can approve this? Do you want to?
Yeah, can you just pull them up as I summarize? Because I can't pull them up on my computer when I'm on this for some reason.
Just tell me, I'll scroll slowly. Do you see that?
Okay, yeah, so we met on March 3rd. Is this the March 3rd one? Yes, met on March 3rd, did the FY21 Recommended Budget. We did a budget overview. I'm just going to do it very fast. If you could scroll.
Keep scrolling, okay. Cut was fast.
A general overview of FY21 went over expenses, funded, unfunded, district administration, district curriculum, and district operations and facilities. We stopped halfway through district curriculum and pushed it to the next meeting. We adjourned at 7:30. The next was on March 12th. Again, the recommended budget district curriculum. We finished student services, elementary schools. We heard from all three elementary school principals. We talked about proposed changes to summer and community education, some pay changes, and then we adjourned at 7:30. And the final was a Zoom call on the 17th. FY21 budget, we did secondary schools. We heard from the two, the middle school and the high school principal and athletics, and we adjourned at 6:30.
Okay, thanks, Kendra. So is there a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Guys have it, thank you. We do have a couple of agenda items that are related to budget and finance. The first two that are listed on the agenda deal with staff compensation adjustments in community ed and extended school year. I was going to ask if there would be a motion to table that for the moment for this meeting, and then we could come back to it at a later time, when hopefully when we're not in the same kind of situation we are at the moment. But I will say that I think we intend to address this issue. But I think it's, I would recommend we table it for the moment.
I would make a motion to table it to a future meeting.
Second.
Second. Any discussion, comments? All in favor?
Hi.
I. Opposed? Guys have it, thank you. Next item is also Budget and Finance, although it didn't come out of the Subcommittee. And that's a budget transfer for the Phillips Building renovations. Dr. Goldston?
Pulled up the wrong one. No, I didn't. Sorry. So as we're all very aware that although we've experienced a little bit of a hiccup in the middle of our exciting building projects, that I'm not here to discuss necessarily what that will or will not impact in terms of the future. But one thing I know for sure is that the first building that will be worked on is the Hosmer Elementary School, which calls for the conversion of the Phillips Building into the preschool and the pre-K. So at some point in time, that is definitely going to happen. Right now, we have received bids to do the work. And in order to be ready for that change, meaning that move in in September, we are looking, and I'm going to hand it over to Heidi, who will explain more. We are looking to move into, move that project and pay for it through the operating budgets so that we can make sure that we are ready to roll in September. So Heidi, would you like to talk about that?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to wrap this into the attached budget report. You can see in what was in the memo that we have a lot of the salaries encumbered and it's going to fall down. Obviously, there are a number of things that... and it's gonna fall down. Obviously, there are a number of things that we can't encumber in salaries. I've touched upon those in the memo and the spirit of moving things along quickly. I won't read through all of that. However, that brings us down to, you know, with the sort of the average place that we are every year. Nothing significant to talk about as far as the budget right now. Earlier, we asked the school committee to vote a $200,000 budget transfer to facilities for what was estimated by the architect. Something make a noise, to be an amount over and above what had been put on the CIP. And now that that bid has come in, we find we only need 50,000 of that 200. So, that was nice to get that bid in. So, it wouldn't require a vote across the cost centers, because you voted it earlier, and that's already in facilities. So, that 150, we really just asked for the blessing to school committee's approval to use that 150 that was originally intended for the locker rooms towards the Phillips renovation. Then additionally, as in the memo, the Phillips renovation, including the 10% contingency, came in at 536,000. So, we ask for tonight that we transfer 386,000 additionally from the 150 out of our operating budget towards this project. If you recall, last year, we had, you know, hundreds of thousands at the end of the year in CIP projects, and we try to do those every year. But given that this would take two council meetings to vote, rather than holding the funds and putting it towards other CIP projects, we ask that we have the okay to use that. As mentioned in the meeting, because we haven't closed off the time when POs are entered, although we know that we will have the funds, we ask that we be able to give to the school committee at a later date the detailed backup of all the different lines or the cost centers that the amount would be transferred from. But we do know that we would have the money. And because we need to sign the contract, we are hopeful that if the school committee does vote affirmative tonight, that we will be able to award the contract tomorrow. Okay. Apologize for my scratchy voice.
That's all right. Thank you, Heidi. So, I think what we're looking for here would be a motion, and we can have more discussion about it. A motion, as I see it, would be to support the Phillips renovation project with $150,000 from the facilities line and a $386,000 from the operating budget with the particular lines to be determined later.
I would make the motion to do that. I do think we already did the 150, as she said. So, I think right now, we're only transferring the 386. So, I would make the motion that we transfer the 386 with the details to follow.
Okay. Right. So, discussion on that? So, the motion would be to transfer the 386 to the facilities line and with the details to follow in terms of the exact line items, lines. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? Guys have it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item. Where's my agenda? Next item on the agenda would be the personnel plan during closure. Dr. Galston?
Excellent. Thank you. So, I just wanted to review for the school committee the general plan for compensation for our staff as we go through the COVID-19 closure. So, as you know, the doors of our schools may, I'm gonna stop and read a little bit, because this is important. Doors of our schools may be closed, but our faculty and staff are hard at work in their new virtual work reality. As such, we will continue to compensate our staff to the greatest extent possible for the work that they are doing. This comes from a major, again, as I spoke about, the superintendents who are in constant communication around this, and a commitment from the commissioner to support districts in ensuring that we take care of our hourly employees, all of our employees, in essence, that we can, to the extent possible, because of the fact that if we are able to open up on April the 7th, that we want to have continuity in staffing, and even if it's a prolonged closure, we depend on these people to ensure that our students are learning. And therefore, if we can continue to have them be part of this virtual reality in terms of work, then when we do open up and get started again, we will be in a much better place than if we have to rehire a bunch of our staff. So, it is a recommendation from the state level, and it is something that I would like to do as well, that I'm planning on doing as well. So, our goal is to provide meaningful remote working opportunities for our staff during the closure in order to ensure a stable workforce upon reopening. So, to that end, expectations have been set up for aligned staff, so people who are under contract, which include direct interaction with students, curation of resources, meetings with principals and grade-level colleagues, as well as professional development. Our non-aligned hourly workers will be provided with robust professional development that will be exceedingly beneficial for the organization, as well as the individual staff member that is involved. So, the intention, I'm gonna stop here for one second, just so that we can ground this conversation on who we're talking about. You know, most of our staff is aligned, meaning they are members of a bargaining unit. So, whether that be teachers, coordinators, assistant principals, instructional assistants, custodians, and food service workers, as well as our administrative assistants. All of those employees are governed under a collective bargaining agreement, and we intend to move forward with them in terms of providing work opportunities. As you know, from the governor's statement today, we are down to essential personnel. But, so what that means for our district right now is we have food service workers who are here to distribute the lunches. We had 53 people come today for lunches, and a lot of them are the students themselves. So, it's an essential commitment that we've made. Our custodians are also in our buildings, continuing to work and keep our building safe. If we're ready to open when we're ready to open, but also to ensure that we are keeping our workers safe as well in terms of disinfection and cleaning. And then our tech support staff is also at the high school, providing the Chromebook distribution, and we'll be doing a lot of troubleshooting as we have all this technology in the hands of our families. Things will inevitably break, so they are working as well. So, at this point in time, all of our staff, our regular day staff are engaged in work, whether it be, again, virtually or whether it be actually in our buildings, and therefore, we will be compensating them throughout the year. So, again, in terms of the non-aligned, meaning non-union members and our hourly workers, we are talking about seven Title I tutors that we have that are funded, actually not from the operating budget, but 11 lunch aids.
What, honey? Can I use?
There, my friend. So, sorry, two door monitors. We have two door monitors, one at the middle school and one at the Hosmer. And we have four building-based subs. And then those are basically our non-aligned hourly workers that we will continue to compensate. Our plan for all of them is to be engaged in either work, meaning data analysis, or designing interventions for students, or it's through professional development. One of the things that we will do with, say, our lunch aids and door monitors is engage in a learning activity through the use of a book called "No Such Thing as a Bad Kid" by Charlie Applestein, and he is a great. A meeting with those individuals as well to process the book and to engage them in their learning. So, we are very confident that we will be able to continue our employees gainfully working, even though they are not in the buildings. The one thing that we have that is not common in the Commonwealth, but we do have our community education program, which is not part of the regular day. It's the extended day or the morning care or some of the courses for kids in our adult education. So, this is actually a fee-based revenue-based program that, at this point in time, you know, we don't know what will happen in the future. But we are going to streamline that in terms of who it is that we're able to pay moving forward, which will be done on a very voluntary basis. If people wish to engage in the development of resources for the families that are involved in extended day, or if they wish to be part of the professional development. But that is one area that I think we're gonna have to think about moving forward as, given the fact that it is revenue-based, and right now, we don't have that revenue. And we think that we can move forward for the next couple of weeks, but we will reassess that on April the 10th to determine what our next steps are with extended day. The point is, is that we want to take care of all of our staff as much as we can, but we also realize that there's a reality of, especially with our fee-based programming, that without revenue, it's gonna become increasingly more difficult. But we will ensure that we take care of our staff as much as we can. And if there comes a point in time where we have to go in a different direction, then we will support all of our staff through whatever their next steps may be. Our goal is to open back up. I'm really optimistic and hopeful that we're able to do that before the end of the year and bring everybody back. But this is at least through April 7th what our plan is for all of our staff.
Okay. Thank you, DeeDee. I want to say, you know, I know that this has been a very challenging issue that's taken quite a bit of time, and other communities, other districts are facing this as well. And I appreciate the efforts of trying to do the best we can to provide support for all the employees in the district. So, I thank you for your work on this. Questions? Comments from people in the committee members? Just one click on the numbers, DeeDee. I didn't, you cut out just for a moment there. You talked about seven, I think, Title I tutors, and then 11, which was the number of?
Lunch aids, which work on a very part-time basis.
Okay. Other questions or comments? No? So, I guess what, we do have it as a, there's a, I suppose, a very specific action item here. But I do think it would be in order for the school committee to support the superintendent in the kind of personnel strategy.
Yeah, no, can I ask one question?
Sure.
I, this sounds right, DeeDee. Thank you. I had a question about community ed. I know this plan is only takes us through April 7th, which I think is taken in small chunks like that. I know there, in our last budget meeting, we did have a discussion about there being additional funds in the community ed revolving account. When we go back to this, it would be very helpful to understand how much is left in there. What is a week, an additional week mean in continuing to pay hourly staff? If we have to make some hard decisions, I'd like to have those numbers in front of us.
Right. And we will absolutely do that. That's why, again, I think it's good to move us through the April 7th. With community ed, I'd like to extend it to the 10th, because that's a Friday. I think the 7th is Tuesday. But, yes, so if we were, whatever decision we make after this point in time, I do with the, you know, what it would cost to continue in what we're doing, and then what we have available to fund that. There, you know, and there's a lot of complicating factors around that, just in terms of ensuring that we're able to have the program next year, given the fact that we do have that loss of revenue. So, we will have the program. I didn't mean it that way. Meaning, it's not just how much money we have in the revolving account. How much money do we need to ensure that we're able to start back up again as well? So, we will have all that for you if we get to a place where we have to make some different decisions.
And you feel confident at this moment that even from now until April 7th isn't gonna put the revolving account in a precarious situation?
I think we can make it through April 7th, and remember that the plan is, actually Debbie, tomorrow, we'll be soliciting for the 47 staff members that are impacted by this, whether they actually want to continue. You know, it's not necessarily, you know, we don't know for sure that all 47 are in that place. Some of them might be, you know, already working at home and, you know, trying to work for families. I don't know. I mean, I think we'll have a better sense of what the final cost will be, but we do think we can make it through the 10th with this event.
So, when would you have the numbers for like now until April 10th?
So, I think we, I mean, I can give that to the school committee via an email pretty quickly. I think that that's something that Heidi can work on, but we just didn't have it ready for this evening.
Okay. And you, because you also don't know who's gonna, who wants to take you up on the offer from that?
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you.
DeeDee, was the 47 staff, does that, is that the total? Or that's after you've taken out the, like, the IAs who work full-time?
Right. So, that's the total number of staff who only work for the extended day program.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are any of these employees entitled to unemployment? And some of them, if they are, it may be more beneficial to go that route?
So, when we communicate to the extended day staff, we will be sharing information about unemployment. And certainly, that is a direction that they can go in as well. I think that that would be an option that, you know, I don't, I can't give you what number of people might just want to move into that direction, but that is something that they can do. If we're moving into an opt-in, you know, instead of, you know, this is still your job, then that gives them that flexibility to be able to make that decision.
Thank you.
If I could jump in, I'm sorry, I can't figure out where the raising the hand thing is at the moment. Ballparking, I just want to say that this was late, and I'm at home, and I didn't have a chance to get that to DeeDee. But it's around $14,000 a week. Or this is just the staff. It's not the people who are in Unit A or Unit D or the salaried Deb and Jeff Bodnar and the three site coordinators, or the high school staff. So, it's the 43 or 47, or whoever may take advantage, whatever that number was. Sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Yeah. So, Deb got me late today, all of those people, and how many hours they do a week, and they work at all different rates. So, this would be the before-school and the after-school, and, you know, combined, it'd be about $14,000 a week.
And do you know how much, by chance, how much we have in the revolving account right now?
I don't know the number right now. I can say that while it was a healthy amount coming in, we do know that the programs as a whole, as we discussed in the Subcommittee meetings, is running at a deficit every year. So, you know, we did discuss that we would be asking for a rate increase for September. And even with that, we would probably still operate the deficit next year. So, to, you know, we'll be absorbing this. We will be losing the revenue, and then presumably not paying any of the staff when we do lose the revenue, except for the salaried folks. So, that would mostly offset each other. But we do know that, and that's what we talked about during the meetings, that the combination of putting in a step plan that started in 19 and, you know, which is a 3% per step, and then only doing a 2% rate increase, I don't know how that was calculated during that time. I know it was NASDAQ coming in. But regardless, we will have to look at that, but we would be coming at a future meeting, probably next month, to discuss. That would have been happening regardless of this. So.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? Okay, you know, some of this, particularly that part, is kind of, I suppose, evolving as we go along here, and we find out more as the circumstances change. But again, Dr. Galston and Heidi, thank you for putting this work together, and we'll keep our attention. It will definitely keep, we have to keep an eye on it. So, I guess, if there's, would there be a motion from someone in the committee to express, support the personnel plan for compensation during this period?
I would make a motion that we support the personnel plan for compensation and request an update around April 7th as to what we're doing next, if we continue in the same, the same situation.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Guys have it. All right. Few more items on the agenda. We could work with the approval of gifts. Actually, they're on the screen here. Thank you, DeeDee. We have a series of gifts, $15, $17 to Music Festival. Maria Carassino, Stephanie Hackett, Laura Kehoe, and Eric Maylis, Richard Shea, Christopher Sheperd, Ellen Cross, and Heim Dung and Tracy Lay. And then we have other gifts, Joe and Chloe and Holly Paces, $85 to the Music Festival. Hosmer PT, $45 for the high school PTSO. the high school PTSO, two hundred dollars to robotics. And Arbella Insurance Foundation, four hundred dollars to for Hosmer Bus Field. Is there a motion to approve the gifts? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Nice to have it. Thank you. And then we also have the minutes from our last school committee meeting on March second. Those were sent out earlier.
To approve the minutes of March second.
All in favor? Opposed? Nice to have it. Thank you. Reports, Policy Subcommittee, Lilly?
Well, our, our subcommittee meeting slightly became a moot point very soon thereafter, but we had a really great meeting with both Kathy and DeeDee. Looking at disinfectant protocols, what we were doing in our schools to keep our kids safe. It was actually a very interesting process just to learn about some of what was happening in the schools. You know, before I go any further, I just, I have to thank our custodial staff. The amount of work they have put in to keep our kids safe, to keep our schools clean, it's just, it's really profound, the hard work that they do and I'm just hearing from kind of both from them and from our nursing staff about all the kind of efforts that they were making to ensure the safety of our students during all of this was really meaningful. So I really appreciated that, you know, Kathy was able to get her, get us a lot of information. Updates from all of the different school nurses from across the districts about the ways that they were teaching kids to wash their hands. Talking about what we were putting in place. Obviously now we're in a different situation, but it was a really good meeting and I think it also gave us a sense of kind of what types of things we need to discuss moving forward and in terms of just general hygiene and things like that with our students. I just, I applaud our nursing staff across the district for the hard work that they do every day and, and the preparation that they were putting in to keep our kids safe during all of this. So thank you to kind of all of the members of our staff who I think sometimes go unrecognized that are doing incredibly hard work to make sure our students are staying safe. We did have other items on our agenda that we were hoping to get to that have actually now been tabled twice due to the evolving situations. So the district has been and will continue to work on our issues of bullying and harassment. You know, they are currently putting together a team, which again during this time might be a little bit slower moving. But a team to kind of look at our policies and re-up some of the things that we have to be working on. And, you know, that is going to be an ongoing process during this time period, but we're hoping to kind of get back into the swing of things as we move forward and start updating people on those.
Okay, thank you, Lilly. Is there questions for Lilly from the report? Their motion to approve the report?
Make a motion to accept the report.
All in favor? Opposed? Nice to have it. Thank you. Building for the Future. Mark, do you want to make some, any comments about?
As, as everyone is well aware, we pretty much canceled our two elementary school public forums, our high school, I'm sorry, you know, our, our high school forum that we were going to have, and we've canceled our building committee meetings, our next meeting is scheduled for the first week of April for the elementary schools, but you know, we'll have to take a wait-and-see attitude on that one as well. It was an email that I sent to the council, you know, that we have making them aware of council meetings being canceled and, and activities being canceled and right now, unfortunately, we're in a very difficult situation. The, in speaking to Scott and, and I have my weekly meetings with the project management teams. We're still moving forward with all the projects, but we're just not having any building committee meetings and public discussions about them at this time. So that's all I have to offer right now.
Hey, just to confirm, Mark, that the construction documents did, did go out, I think, correctly, right before
Bid documents, bid documents for the elementary schools, for the two elementary schools went out on March twelfth. I don't have the date in front of me of when they're going to be returned. That will probably trigger a meeting based on you know, costs and where we are at that point.
Right.
But we'll have to revisit that at the time.
Mark, can I ask you a question? Bid documents went out March twelfth. That's like the, the requests for bids to companies went out and then we're waiting to hear back. Is that accurate?
These were the bids for the first phase of the elementary school project, which is the kind of in the Hosmer.
Okay.
But I don't remember the exact dates, but it's, it's over a month. Well, actually, I think it's almost, it's like seven weeks or something like that.
Yes.
Roughly.
Yes.
So in, in seven weeks, so tell me what we'll know, just so I understand the process a little bit.
We will know, we will know where we are based on the bids that we receive. How that would impact the budget that we've prepared for the three elementary schools.
Yeah. Right.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on that?
I had a quick question. Mark, do you think that it's possible to have virtual meetings similar to what we're doing now if we have building committee business that needs to get done, but we're not holding meetings in person?
I will, I will, I, I certainly think that this is an option. I had a very long conversation with the town attorney today and their firm is recommending unless it's an emergency, we don't do this because of a number of different reasons. I don't want to get into them at this point. You know, if there, if I feel that we would need to have a meeting because these bids came in so far over budget that we have a problem, then yes. But at this point, we're, we're, we're still being optimistic that according to the governor on April seventh or eighth, we can resume some pub, some activities. I just, I just want to caution that we're treading on some unusual, unusual situation. I don't want to exclude the public from these discussions if we have issues. And this is difficult. I know people have, are already texting me saying that they're having a hard time. They can't join the program, so I don't, because this is an extreme, this is a very sensitive and expensive operation. I want to make sure we're doing this properly.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Mark. On the high school project, DeeDee, do you have any updates there?
I don't whatsoever at this point in time. I would just like to say though that I think that what we're going through right now is great preparation for a new type of learning once we actually have a new high school, so.
Okay, alright. Next item is the disposition of surplus property. We don't need to vote on that. There was just one item, a, a broken kiln, I think. Is what I saw on the list, so that's, that's fine. School Committee Chair. The one item that was listed there was the superintendent's contract and I'm going to postpone that for the moment. There's, there, there are no issues here, but we want to, the school committee has met in executive session to talk about the contract and is prepared to move forward with that. I think there's some satisfaction and feeling that there, we want to move forward with it, but we're, you know, with the, we want to make sure there's also something that's knowledge, aware in the public, and so this is the first meeting. We've tried to do that, so not as much attention to it and we just so I think we'll postpone it. There isn't an urgency there. The superintendent's contract goes into the end of the June thirtieth, end of the fiscal year. And so I think we have time to address that and move forward and I can fully expect to move forward in a positive way. The other comment I would make in the chairs, another business item. We are still, we have this ad hoc committee looking at the, for attorney services. We have put together a request for proposals. We're looking at a draft of that. I think we'll try to finish that up in the next few days so that we can get that out. I don't want to postpone that for too long. Because we have to send it out and then get responses and we need to give you know, a, a legal firms probably at least three to four weeks to respond, so I think we want to move that forward. Those were my main items from the chair. Superintendent?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just want to reiterate once again my thanks to the, the team that has, meaning the, the very large Watertown Public Schools team that has been working so diligently in these past several days to put together what it is that we're providing for our, our children. I alluded to the fact that I think I've had more meetings in the last week than I've ever had in my life. And it's been fantastic and I think that we're growing together even more. We have such a strong team. I just think we're actually growing even more together due to this. We meet virtually every day at cabinets. We meet every day as an admin council with principals. We meet every other day with the town in terms of the town department heads. I do. The, you know, coordinators meet almost every day. It's it's just, we're, we're really cranking it out. Let's just put it that way. I want to say once again, I know I already said this before, but I just want to thank the people who are still in our buildings and keeping us safe and also providing the meals that we have for our students, both breakfast and lunch five days a week and do it with a smile and just really want to be here. I mean, they were concerned that we didn't have enough of a rotation so that everybody got a chance to be part of the distribution of food. So it is, it's just a is a very sad time in our, our community and our country and our world, but it also is a bright moment where you just see everybody trying to work together and, and give and just be part of this. Making sure our families are fed and safe and, and moving along with their learning. So I just my deep humble appreciation to everybody and that's all I can say right now.
Now, thank you, Dr. Galson, and certainly as it's been said at this meeting, it's very much appreciated by the school committee and I think by the broader community for all the work that, that you and all the other educators in the Watertown schools have been doing. So again, thank you very much for that.
Could I ask one question just based on, you said, DeeDee?
Yes.
I, I reiterating just how appreciative of the, the food services. You got that up really fast and that's really, that was it's usually important to a large, a percentage of our population. Do you know how, you, you mentioned that fifty-three lunches were served today. Has that been pretty consistent? Has, have you seen different kind of numbers?
It's grown. We started at about forty at the beginning of last week, so Monday last week, I think it was forty, then it was like forty-two, then forty-four and then it was fifty on Friday and then fifty-three today. So I think we're only going to see it grow. And once again, the food is fantastic. The lunches are filled. There's plenty for breakfast. And just last week, we had Iggy's Bakery drop off fifty loaves of bread and they did another drop off as well.
Oh, great.
You know, it's not just what we're providing, but people are adding as well and that staff, the food service staff is I mean, they are on the frontline. I mean, they are right there with our families unlike any, any of the rest of us, except for, you know, maybe the you know, the buildings trying to get out the Chromebooks and the tech staff with the, the, but that's, that's a little bit more one-offs as opposed to the food service, which is, you know, two hours every day, no matter what. It's, it's powerful.
Great.
How much we appreciate him?
Oh, I will. And he's, he's great. And he's, I think he's enjoying making sure that we're doing all the right things for, for our kids. Just for anybody who's, will be listening, because we'll be able to post this as a video recording as well. If anybody needs food or anybody needs anything, the email address is lunch underscore line at Watertown dot A12 dot MA dot US. And so we can deliver if we need to, or people can continue to come to pick up food, but that is something that is available. Very important.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Galson. Any other questions on that? Okay, thank you. New business? Any new business?
Real quick, I just want to kind of take that sentiment of thanks and also because we're going to post this, just I want to thank all the grocery store workers, all the healthcare workers. All the first responders, all of the people who are out there on the front lines, keeping all of us safe and keeping us functional as a community. I just, I want to, I want to really thank everybody, just because I think this is a really hard time for so many. Okay, and my son is here, and so I've got to run, but thank you.
Alright, thanks, Lilly. Any other new business? Announcements, Dr. Galson, you're still going to do the, your coffee online?
I am. Yes, I'll put that on the website. Zoom meeting coffee on the thirtieth of March.
Okay, what time will that be?
I'll do both, as I always do, a nine o'clock in the morning and a six o'clock at night. And now that I do Zoom meeting, I'll do this forever, so. I'll be present for public, for anyone who wants to come in the future when we're back into that realm, but now I can do Zoom meetings for people who can't make it to the
Yeah.
The office, so.
That's great. That's good. That's good. So currently, we, we have a school committee meeting scheduled for April sixth and I say if needed. So we'll, we'll see as the time progresses here, the, the need there. And I, if we do have one, it would be online as well. Public forum?
I'll unmute everybody.
Oh, it's okay. Anybody, anyone speak in public forum? No? Okay, so motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Opposed? You guys have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.